Thank you. Welcome, everyone, to today's Town of Chatham Zoning Board of Appeals meeting. The date is January 13, 2022. This meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly thereafter for scheduled on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please let us know. The meeting of the ZBA is being conducted remotely in accordance with Section 20 of Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, and shall afford adequate alternative means of public access via Microsoft Teams by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410, then have to punch in the conference ID number, which is 687-041-852, and then hit the pound sign. Or you can join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. Despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access, and we will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. In accordance with town policy, the public can speak to any issue slash hearing or business item on the agenda during the meeting when recognized by the chair. To authorize this form of meeting, it's a hybrid form, I will now take a roll call of all board members, so please state your name and whether you vote yes or no. We'll start with Buck.
James M. Upson, I support this format.
William Grau, I support the format.
Paul Semple, I support the format.
David S. Nixon, I support it.
David R. Thompson, I support it.
Randy Potash, support.
And David H. Veitch votes yes.
I would say that any citizens or non-board members participating in the call via the phone, please give us your name when you are recognized and the last four digits of your phone number for ID purposes. Our hearings are as follows. The hearing notice is read by Sarah B. Clark. Sarah is a Town of Chatham employee, and she is the PPO for the town. It's a Principal Permitting Officer. It would then be a presentation either by the individuals who filled out the application and submitted it, or their representative. Following that, I would ask for anyone in support of the appeal or application to speak. That could either be here or through Microsoft Teams. When that's done, I would read any and all letters received by the board, whether pro or con. I would then ask that anyone who wishes to speak against the appeal to do so, or if they have a question, they may speak. There might be some rebuttal after that. Then we would have direct questions by the board members to anyone present who participated in the above. With that, we would then close the public hearing and go into deliberations and have a vote, we hope. Voting in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts is supermajority, so in our case, there are five voters, so to be successful, you need to get four yes votes. Voting today would be Buck, Paul, myself, Dave Thompson, and Dave Veitch. And we have to do all votes by roll call, incidentally. First order of business is the minutes from our last meeting, which I think was December 16th. Paul?
I'll move to approve the minutes as published.
Dave Veitch seconds.
We'll take a roll call on that. Buck?
Buck votes yes.
Paul?
All votes yes.
Dave Thompson?
Dave Thompson votes yes.
Dave Veitch?
Dave Veitch votes yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, Sarah? I got my little list here. Application 21-092, please.
Would you like to take the continuance first?
Um...
Or just go straight with the posted agenda?
I think we'll just go.
Okay. Application number 21-092, the Michaela Realty Trust, care of Thad Eldridge, 1038 Main Street, Chatham, 02633, owner of property located at 21 Little Beach Road, also shown on the Town of Chatham assessor's map, 16A, Block 21, Lot H8. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend, or change a non-conforming dwelling on a non-conforming lot via modifications to the previously approved plans and the installation of exterior mechanical system appliances and fencing. The dwelling under construction is non-conforming, and that is located 11.8 feet from Little Beach Road where a 40-foot setback is required, and located entirely within the Coastal Conservancy District, floodplain elevation 13, where a 50-foot setback is required. The proposed stairs will be non-conforming, located 0.5 feet from Windmill Terrace, where a 40-foot setback is required. The proposed mechanical systems will be non-conforming, located 8.9 feet from the northerly butter where a 25-foot setback is required. Also proposed is the installation of fencing as allowed by special permit under Section 4A 3A of the bylaw. The approved building coverage was 1,754 square feet, and the proposed building coverage is 1,740 square feet, where 2,800 square feet is the maximum allowed. The lot is non-conforming, and that it contains zero square feet of buildable upland where 20,000 square feet is required, and contains 7,263 square feet of land area where 40,000 square feet is required in the R40 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6 and 9, and Sections 5B and 8D 2B of the protective bylaw.
Mr. Eldridge?
Good afternoon. For the record, Thad Eldridge, the southeast, representing the Chipmans with their property. Sarah went through quite a few things in there. The building is just about completed, and there were a few changes that are being proposed. So, starting with the north, we had approved two air conditioning HVAC units and a generator hanging off the building, and they would like to relocate those to behind the building on platforms to meet the floodplain, and this would be easier to access. From there in the back of the building, we neglected to permit a fence the last time we were here. That wall was five or six feet off the ground, and some sort of barrier is required, so we're proposing a vinyl fence right at top of the wall and around the utilities. Coming off of that wall down towards Windmill, we had proposed staircase that went straight out towards Windmill, and it would be, it worked better with the topography to twist the stairs so that they can come down to a little landing at the corner of the property. In the rear of the building, there was a set of stairs heading down towards the path that could head out to the beach one day. For flow, they would like to redirect those stairs back towards the parking area. And then the steps that were constructed in the front yard were two tenths of a foot too close to the street, so we're requesting change from the approved 12 feet to an 11.8 foot setback off of Little Beach Road. So, some, a number of minor items that we're looking to seek relief. The proposed changes are pretty similar to the previous plan, and the adequacy of the size of the site is sufficient for these. The size of the proposed structure, the size of the stairs that we're proposing is certainly compatible with the existing properties. The increases to the non-conforming nature, this is not terribly more non-conforming than the previous. We have a two-tenth foot difference to Little Beach Road. The suitability of the site, it was suitable for the building that's under construction, and these are some minor changes. Scale sighting en masse, the stairs really don't apply. The proposed use is still residential. We still have a compliance septic system, water and otherwise. There's no change in the traffic flow. Noise and litter is not changing, and the other utilities are adequate. If there are any questions, I'd be very happy to take them.
Thank you very much. I would ask that, is there anyone in the audience or on Microsoft Teams who wishes to speak in favor of this application? If so, please raise your hand here or indicate on the screen so that Sarah can pick you up if you're doing Teams.
I see no one that wishes to speak in favor of this application.
Okay, then I will read the correspondence. This is from Judith Giorgio, health agent for the Town of Chatham. She writes on 11222, "I have reviewed the modifications to the plan to demolish the two existing two-bedroom cottages and rebuild a four-bedroom dwelling. A septic permit was issued for the proposed dwelling in 2019. I have no concerns about the changes at this time." Then we have a note. This is from Nicole Smith. She is our conservation agent. She writes on January 13, "The field change was approved by the Conservation Commission at the July 12 meeting. A letter will be issued granting approval." And then we have an email. This is from Andrew Greenwald. His address is 9 Windmill Lane. On January 2, he writes, "We received notice regarding the project at 21 Little Beach. We have no objections to the request, and our supportive thank you and the best for 2022." That's the extent of the correspondence. I would now ask for anyone here or in Microsoft Teams world who wishes to speak either against or has a specific question, to either raise your hand here or indicate on the screen so that Sarah can recognize you.
I see no one that wishes to speak in opposition to this application.
Okay, then we'll have questions from the board. We'll start with Buck.
Buck has no questions.
Bill?
No questions.
Paul?
I have no questions.
Dave T.?
Dave T., no questions.
Randy?
No questions.
Nor do I have any questions.
Okay. Well?
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Dave Veitch seconds.
That takes a roll call vote. Buck?
Buck votes yes.
Paul?
All votes yes.
Dave?
Dave T., yes.
Dave?
Dave Veitch votes yes.
And I vote yes. So, Bill?
Voting, I would support this. This doesn't seem to have any negative impact on the neighborhood or the community.
Yes, I agree. I think these are minor changes, and they're probably going to be more effective in using the House, so I don't see a problem with the changes.
Dave Thompson, I would vote in favor of this. Minor, minor changes.
I agree with all my colleagues, and if I were voting, I'd support it.
And I agree. Primarily, these are all improvements that will benefit everyone concerned, so.
I got nothing more to add, but I'd support it.
Okay. Paul? I don't see we need to condition this in any way, shape, or form.
No, I don't see a need for conditions. This is minor work, so I'll move to approve the application as submitted.
Dave Veitch seconds.
Okay, roll call vote. Buck?
Buck votes yes.
Paul?
All votes yes.
Dave T.?
Dave T. votes yes.
Dave V.
Dave Veitch votes yes.
And I vote yes. That's a unanimous vote. Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Chipman. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Litchfield, we need to go to, let me get my little piece of paper. We need to go, Sarah, to 21-093, please.
Application number 21-093, Benjamin Howard Emery, care of William G. Litchfield, Esquire, 330 Orleans Road, North Chatham, Mass. 02650, owner of property located at 624 Orleans Road, also shown on the Town of Chatham assessor's map, 12J, Block 18, Lot 10A. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend, or change a non-conforming accessory structure, garage, on a non-conforming lot via the construction of an addition. The existing garage is non-conforming, and that is located 11.7 feet from the northerly butter and 12.7 feet from the westerly butter. The proposed addition will be non-conforming, in that it will be located 8.9 feet from the northerly butter and 1 foot from the westerly butter, where a 25-foot setback is required. The existing building coverage is 2,532 square feet, 16.4%, and the proposed building coverage is 2,862 square feet, 18.5%, where 15% is the maximum allowed. The lot is non-conforming, and that it contains 15,452 square feet, where 40,000 square feet is required in the R40 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6, and Section 5B of the protective bylaw.
Good afternoon, the Chair, Members of the Board. Bill Litchfield here on behalf...
The petitioner, we would ask, please, that this matter be continued until May 26 in order to attempt to resolve some issues.
Any questions from anyone? Okay, motion, Paul?
I'll move to grant the continuance as requested.
Dave Veitch seconds.
Roll call vote. Buck?
Buck votes yes.
Paul votes yes.
Dave T., yes.
Dave Veitch votes yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you, Mr. Litchfield.
Thank you.
Okay. So, let's go on to... Good. I don't know what the hell they're doing. Okay, Sarah, application 21-094, please.
Application number 21-094, Jeffrey A. and Susan L. Cottrell, care of William G. Litchfield, Esquire, 330 Orleans Road, North Chatham, Mass. 02650, owners of property located at 84 Cranberry Lane, also shown on the Town of Chatham assessor's map, 7C, Block 25, Lot G21. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend, or change a non-conforming dwelling on a non-conforming lot via the construction of an addition and covered entry porch. The existing dwelling is non-conforming, in that it is located 7.2 feet from the westerly butter and partially within the Coastal Conservancy District, floodplain elevation 13. The proposed addition will be non-conforming, in that it will be located 11.1 feet from the westerly butter, where a 15-foot setback is required, and within the Coastal Conservancy District, where a 50-foot setback is required. The existing building coverage is 1,174 square feet, 18.6%, and the proposed building coverage is 1,434 square feet, 22.8%, where 15% is the maximum allowed. The lot is non-conforming, in that it contains 6,300 square feet of buildable upland and contains 14,200 square feet of land area, where 20,000 square feet is required in the R20 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6, and Section 5B of the protective bylaw.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Bill, and members. Bill Litchfield here in behalf of Jeff and Susan Cottrell. Excuse me, I see that Jeff is with us electronically, and also our engineer, Thad Eldridge of ESC, who did the work of the site plan, and also the filing with the Conservation Commission. If Sarah could perhaps bring up the site plan, she would be kind enough, please. Thank you. I have the old-fashioned version here, but, you know, we don't do that anymore. That is the site plan, and as you know from your site visit, it is on Cranberry Lane in South Chatham, and there is a deck on the rear of the building. The Cottrell family has owned this property since 1976. It is a fairly small, sort of a Cape Ranch, and they would like to make a modest expansion out over the westerly side of the existing deck, as shown there, the black outline. They also would like to propose a small covered entry on the front, which is not living space, but it does increase coverage. They have employed Cape Associates to do the plans, which you see, which are modest. The only visible change will be the entryway in the front. The rear proposal, which is approximately 260 square feet, actually, it's less than it, it's about 220 square feet, because 40 feet of the total 260 is the front entryway, they propose to expand the living area. So, I'll go into the criteria for what I think is a fairly straightforward proposal as to adequacy of site, including building coverage and setbacks. All of the lots of the neighborhood are non-conforming, including one which appears to be 30,000 square feet, most of which is wet. But notwithstanding the non-conformities as to lot size and setbacks that we have here, the site is certainly adequate for the house built in 1965. The site will remain adequate for construction of the addition, as shown on the bottom left there at the rear, which will be built in part, in place of the existing deck, and with a small entryway at the front. As to compatibility of size of the neighborhood, on the third sheet of the handout is what I ordinarily do, showing the houses on Cranberry Lane. The lot is somewhat larger, and the house itself is somewhat smaller than most, but are certainly in the mid-range for the street and comparable to others in the neighborhood of relatively modest homes. Coverage is 8.3% of the entire lot. As expanded, coverage is still consistent, again, on the third sheet, you can see that, and the gross floor area and living area numbers are lower still than many even as expanded, and they're certainly lower than all of those which have been updated, as many have. The living area of 1,394 square feet is modest, and certainly in keeping with its surroundings. As to the extent of increase of non-conformities, the non-conformities were, as read by Sarah in the hearing notice, coverage will increase by 260 square feet, part of which is the covered entryway, but we're also reducing the setback on the left side by removing the stairs, which are, we're about four feet further away if we remove those stairs. So, it's a trade-off. Certainly, coverage increases, however. As to suitability of site, impact of the natural environment, the house was built under prior land use regulations, as was everything on the street. Basement is in what has now become the flood zone. If you approve the special permit based on a reduction of hardscape and the nature of the plans themselves, I should let you know the Conservation has already heard and approved this, and in fact, written an order of conditions, and the Chair will read a comment from the Conservation Agent in that regard. As to scale sighting views, scale sighting mass views and vistas, the existing house is consistent with most in the neighborhood. It's certainly far from massive, and with no impact in views and vistas, and if you approve the special permit, that will remain true. The scale will still be appropriate. There's no change in the sighting, obviously, or in mass, and it's essentially without impact on streetscape. It will remain a one-story house, and the addition is at the rear. As to compatibility of use, there's no change. It's sheerly residential. As to adequacy of water and sewer, town water and two bedrooms, there's no change. The Health Agent has written a comment, which the Chair will read. The other criteria, traffic flow and safety, noise and litter and the like, are not at issue. What is at issue is, as you know, the criteria which the law gives you, whether the proposed addition at the rear, providing for a somewhat larger living area with a covered entryway at the front, is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the current non-conforming structure on a non-conforming lot. The proposed change is consistent with the gradual evolution that we see in a number of... in a number of formerly summer neighborhoods, but it is really quite modest. It's 260 square feet. And removal of the existing stairs, as I indicated, will decrease the nonconformity on the westerly side. While coverage increases, it increases to only 10% of the entire lot, which is certainly consistent with other homes in the neighborhood, and it's in keeping with houses on the street. So in light of the criteria and the plans with the addition at the rear in this location on that lot, I think you can find that the proposed change is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. And Jeff, Thad, and I would certainly be happy to try to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this application? If so, either raise your hand here or indicate on the screen so that Sarah can introduce you into the meeting.
I see no one that wishes to speak in favor.
I'll read the correspondence. First, we have a memo. This is from Judith Giorgio, the Health Agent for the town. She writes, "On 11/2, I have reviewed the plan to add an addition to this property. There will be no increase in septic flow. The addition will not encroach on the existing septic system. I have no concerns." And then we have a note from Nicole Smith. This is dated December 28. She's the town's Conservation Agent. She writes, "The project at 84 Cranberry Lane was approved by the Commission, and an order of conditions is being drafted. The OOC will be reviewed and issued at the January 5 work session." And that is the extent of the correspondence. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak either against or has a specific question on this application? If so, please indicate on the screen so that Sarah can recognize you or raise your hand if you're in the audience.
There is no one that wishes to speak in opposition or has a specific question.
Okay, then we'll have questions from the board. Paul, do you have any questions?
I have no questions.
Dave?
I have no questions, sir.
Randy?
I have no questions.
Dave Veach?
Dave Veach has no questions.
Buck?
Buck has no questions.
Bill?
No questions.
Okay.
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Dave Veach seconds.
We need to vote on that, Buck.
Buck votes yes.
Paul?
Paul votes yes.
Dave?
Dave Thompson votes yes.
Dave?
Veach votes yes.
And I vote yes. Deliberations. Dave Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Very small requests. I have no objections. I will vote in favor of this.
Randy?
It meets all the criteria. If I were voting, I would be in favor, and I wish them well.
Dave Veach?
Certainly not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. It's an improvement. I'd support it.
Buck?
So unfortunately, I'd have to say that in reading the bylaw under Section 5, the... One of the intents of it is to protect, reduce, or minimize the adverse impact on our natural resources. And what... There's eight key natural resources in the state of Massachusetts in the Wetland Protection Act, and one of them is a coastal bank. And so when I look at this, there's like two parts that together have me very concerned. The one part is the development of the lot is already nonconforming in that it's 18.6% instead of the 15%. And then they want to go to 22.8. So that would be a 50% increase over the 15%. So it is... It's significant. But I could see that that would still be acceptable if we weren't dealing with the second leg, and that's the coastal bank. I'm concerned that, you know, we have a setback to the Conservancy District of 50 feet. Well, this particular expansion is on the coastal bank. So it's like completely ignoring the setback to the bank. So I think that the extent of the proposed increase in the noncompliance nature, coupled... And it's very important to state that. Coupled with the protection of minimizing the adverse impact on a natural resource, i.e. the coastal bank, I'm not totally in support of this.
Bill?
Yeah, I would have to say that I don't think this has any significant impact, given the deck is there now. And if voting, I would support it.
Paul?
Yeah, I think that the key, from my viewpoint, is the fact that we've already got a disturbed area and an existing structure there, so... And we're removing a portion of stairs that are in that area. So I think overall, looking at it, it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, and I would support it.
Okay. Any further comments? Paul?
I'll move to approve the application as submitted. Can you tell me, Bill, what's the concept in terms of construction?
I honestly don't know. If Mr. Cottrell could indicate, if I could, Mr. Chairman. Jeff, do you have any idea? He already has a contractor. Do you have any idea when Cape Associates would like to start?
We haven't talked about commencing it. You know, realistically, I would suggest it's going to be summer, late summer.
Then in that case, would you be willing to have one more summer in the House, as is, and start after Labor Day?
Certainly.
Thank you.
All right. I will move to approve the application as submitted with a condition that construction would not start until after Labor Day of this year.
Any other conditions necessary?
Well, is there... Is there an ability to keep construction vehicles on-site? Or off-site with permission? It's a fairly... It's a fairly small project. And if we're going to be doing it in the summer, I think a... The standard condition, that Cranberry Lane not be blocked, would not cause a problem. And there's going to be, I suspect, an occasion when a truck may be in the road unloading. But if we're there in the fall, it's less of an issue, anyway. It would be minimal. All right. Well, then I would add the condition that Cranberry Lane be accessible to anyone wishing to go through there during construction.
Okay. All right.
Dave Veach seconds.
Okay. We need a roll call vote. Please indicate if you're in favor or not. Buck?
Buck votes no.
Paul?
Paul votes yes.
Dave?
Dave Thompson votes yes.
Dave Veach?
Dave Veach votes yes.
And I vote yes. That's a four-to-one vote, Mr. Litchfield.
Thank you very much.
You were successful. I'll pass this around. Sarah, I could not find the sheet for 21 to sign. Well, I won't delay with that. I do have the one for the one we just did. Sarah, if you would read the next one, please.
Application number 21-095, John R. Rylander and Amy Dixon Rylander, care of George Riley, 63 Brook Trail Road, Brewster, Mass. 02631. Owners of property located at 571 Old Harbor Road, also shown on the Town of Chatham's assessor's map, 16H Block 4A, Lot C-2. The applicant proposes to install exterior mechanical system appliances, pool equipment, and relocated AC condensers 10.7 feet from the northerly abutter, where a 25-foot setback is required. The proposed mechanical system appliances will be located next to the existing generator, which is nine feet from the northerly abutter. The lot contains 74,800 square feet in the R-40 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6, and Section 5B of the protective bylaw.
Okay. Mr. Riley?
Yes.
The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. I'm George Riley, and I'm representing the Ryandlers on this project. If we could look at the site plan for a second? If you could put that up there. Ah, there we go. Okay. So the project here is to locate the mechanical utilities, particularly for the pool and the house, in the area where the existing generator is. And we chose that area because it's ease of access for maintenance with the driveway, that it's proximity to both the pool and the house, that their underground utilities are all there, and that there's no dwellings within 100 feet of that spot. So... And we were going to mitigate that with a enclosure, a six-foot enclosure, and a seven-foot arborvitae hedge separating the utility area from Emery Lane. Now, I had a call from Mr. Litchfield saying that some of the abutters were nervous. I think he can attest to this, but to the noise level, increased noise level of the utilities in that area. So we looked at the ways to mitigate that for those abutters and decided we could change the air conditioning units and move them into this...
I'm sorry, you can't speak when you're away from the mic. Yep.
I forget. I need my pointer.
There you go.
All right.
There should be a pointer up there. I don't know.
And essentially, they won't be left where they are, but they'll be outside of the setback jurisdiction. So they'll be compliant. And then the only increase in there will be the pool utility pump. The pool utility pump has a decibel level of 45 decibels. So I, myself, other than knowing that a decibel is the loudness of noise, really had no idea what a decibel was. So I found that it is the smallest possible increase that a human being can discern from one decibel to the other. So a... A, let's say, a leaf blower or a lawnmower would be about 100 decibels. A air conditioning unit was about 70. Leaves rustling are 30. Average home noise is 40. So this pump is at 45. It's below conversation level. It's barely discernible. And certainly with an enclosure, probably couldn't be heard from Emery Lane. It would take somebody standing, really listening, to know that that would work. So I think that, given the enclosure and the hedge so that you can't really see any of these utilities, and that the enclosure will mitigate the sound of the generator, which is, of course, way louder than anything, I think the whole project is an improvement over the existing situation. So that's my case at the moment. Oh, I just want to note that part of the reason to keep it there was outside of the Conservation jurisdiction for the 100 foot from the resource.
Okay?
Okay, thank you.
All right. Is there anyone in the audience, either here or Microsoft Teams, that wishes to speak in favor of this application? If so, indicate now so we can recognize you.
I see no one that wishes to speak in favor of this application.
All right. Then I will read the correspondence. The first is from Mark Nuvie. The address is 124 Emery Lane. And it was received January 13. "We are writing to express concern over the proposal to relocate existing air conditioning units and new pool equipment to a location within the zoning setback from our quiet lane. We understand that the generator is already too close to the property line, but that only runs occasionally. The compressors and pumps would run all summer, substantially impacting the quiet neighborhood with this noise. Since the property consists of two acres, we can't really understand why it's necessary to violate the zoning requirement. Surely, there must be some other location on this very large property where they could be placed in compliance with our bylaw. We hope that your board will strongly encourage the petitioner to reconsider the proposal and give some thought to alternatives. Thoughtful consideration is exactly what should happen here, as there is no need to place these units so close to the property line. As nearby abutters, we have pride in our neighborhood and believe that a better solution to the homeowner's goals can be developed, one which is respectful of zoning setbacks. We know that your board will give consideration to our request." Then we have a letter. This is from Margaret Skinner, 75 Emery Lane. It was received on January 13. "We reside on Emery Lane, a narrow private way which we and our neighbors walk regularly. We understand that the owners of 571 Old Harbor Road want to place air conditioning units and a pool pump too close to the lot line, which would not comply with our zoning bylaw. We have become aware that, because the generator is already there, they have a right to ask for a special permit instead of a variance. But that doesn't mean that it should be granted, especially since there's plenty of room on the large lot where the equipment could be placed without violating the bylaw. It's not easy to write in opposition to a neighbor's request, but perhaps an alternative location could be considered. This is a troubling encroachment, and one which we think is not necessary. We hope the Board of Appeals will ask the petitioners to reconsider this request. Regrettably, as it now stands, we have objections to it." And then we have a letter that is signed by Alan Roulette of 105 Emery Lane, Donald St. Pierre of 189 Emery Lane, and Laura Donahue of 201 Emery Lane. And they write on January 12. "We own the property on Emery Lane, which is near to 571 Old Harbor. We are writing to express our concerns about the application to place mechanical equipment too close to the lot line. Emery Lane is a quiet, pedestrian-oriented private way, which we all use and enjoy. And we can't understand the rationale for moving the current units, which comply with the bylaw, to make them noncompliant. We've learned that the generator is already too close, but it only runs for testing. The new equipment would run all summer. It would be a significant change, and one which just isn't necessary, since on this large lot, there must be other locations where this equipment could be placed in compliance with our bylaw. We understand that, with your approval, changes can be made if they're not detrimental. But here, there's no need to create a noisy situation in our neighborhood too close to the property line when there must be other locations too close to the property line, when there must be other locations where the equipment could be placed. We know that you will give careful consideration to our concerns, and thank you for allowing us to comment." Then we have a letter from William and Shelley Lavallo. They write on January 12th. "We own the property at 193 Emery Lane and are writing in opposition to the petition submitted for 571 Old Harbor Road for a special permit to install mechanical equipment within the zoning setback distance from a property line. We are abutters to that property until the location being proposed for mechanical equipment installation. The noise from the equipment location being proposed will impact the quietness of our property and the surrounding neighborhood of Emery Lane. The petitioner argues that this will not be a significant difference because an emergency generator is already in that location, creating a nonconforming condition, and the additional equipment is much quieter than the generator. Had the generator not been there, this request would be a variance rather than a special permit. This special permit request is making a nonconforming condition substantially worse, mainly because the generator doesn't run except for a five-minute test cycle once a week, while the mechanical equipment will be running all summer. The required mechanical setback represents a fair and reasonable approach to mitigate noise, which the town incorporated into the bylaws in 2012. The proposed request doesn't seem necessary in such a large lot, and we expect that there are other locations that can accommodate this mechanical equipment in compliance with the bylaws. We respectfully request that you and other members of the board ask the petitioner to revise their proposal and create a zoning compliance solution for their equipment installation." And that is the extent of the correspondence. Then I'll now ask, is there anyone here or on Microsoft Teams who wishes to speak in opposition, has a specific question? Mr. Litchfield?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bill Litchfield here in behalf of Bill and Shelley Lavallo. And I want to, oh, that mic is not on. Thank you very much. Good afternoon. Bill Litchfield here in behalf of Bill and Shelley Lavallo. And I want to expand a little bit on the comments in their letter. And I also appreciate George Riley's willingness to meet with me to discuss the matter, and we also acknowledge the fact that the air conditioning compressors are now proposed not to be a part of this petition. But I do have some sort of general comments and some specific comments. We've got something like 8,000 parcels in this town and about, something on the order of 6,500 or 7,000 of them are nonconforming. That means they were changed, something happened, or the zoning bylaw was changed, which impacted them. In this particular case, it's a very, it's a difference in kind. There are options here, many options. Here, we have a completely conforming lot, 77,000 square feet, which was created 20 years after the last zoning change in that part of town, the change from R20 tonight to R40. According to the records in the building department, the permit for the generator, which didn't seem to show exactly where it was going to be located, the permit for the generator which gets us in the door today, gets the application in the door today, was pulled in November of 2011. That was six months before the zoning change, which would have prohibited that location. It was only a couple of months before the legal ad, which would have had the same effect. Regardless of where the generator was supposed to be cited, we know where it is cited, and it's too close to the lot line. The intent of the bylaw change, however, was to prohibit exterior mechanical appliance systems within the zoning setbacks. So, here, we're piggybacking or propose to piggyback a very, very minor nonconformity by virtue of a generator, which runs a few minutes a week, maybe 15 minutes a week for testing. And we're proposing, we were originally proposing to add pool equipment as well as the condensers. Now, for the pool equipment, I don't have a swimming pool, but I understand that you also need a heater in addition to the pump. And I don't think there was an application for the heater, so that raises a question. In this case, we have a neighborhood where there seems to be fairly unanimous objection. I recognize that it's, it's human nature on the part of members of this board to become somewhat inured to requests for special permits. But usually, there's very little choice. You can't, you know, your house is already built, your lot isn't large enough. In this case, the house is built, and oddly enough, there are already air conditioning compressors. It was a convenience of the homeowner, because he didn't want them apparently that close to his house, that he wants to put them up by Emery Lane. The home, the folks on Emery Lane are not enamored of that for obvious reasons. Emery Lane has sort of a special character. There's a former member of this board, a former chairman of the board, who lived on Emery Lane, and some of you who've been around for a while will recall his opposition to a special permit request on Old Harbor Road because of its impact on Emery Lane. Of course, he was terribly wrong, and my client's petition was approved. But, but the point is that the folks on Emery Lane do take that neighborhood very seriously. George, it doesn't come before you very often, but you ordinarily look at the criteria. You didn't mention them, so I will. One of them is noise. I've been before you many, many times for special permits, which involve exterior mechanical appliance systems. And if anybody had any question, first of all, I usually talk to the neighbors in advance. But if anybody had any questions, I came with cut sheets talking about exactly what the decibel level was. That hasn't happened. Another criteria is streetscape in a general way. This property doesn't have any rights in Emery Lane, but obviously, it is right up against Emery Lane. And the folks on Emery Lane, who, I recognize it's your job to determine whether the substantial detriment of the neighborhood, but I also appreciate the fact that you ordinarily are cognizant of neighborhood concerns. And here, we have a fairly strong degree of opposition from the neighbors. I won't say unanimously, because not everyone on Emery Lane is interested, but those who are immediately nearby seem to be. Sarah, would you be kind enough to put up the site plan? Another consideration is impact on the natural environment. And Mr. Riley indicated that they were concerned with easy access from the driveway of the pool, and they also wanted to stay out of the conservancy district. But in fact, if you look to the left of the pool, which is new, that is within the 100-foot zone. The 100-foot zone is that curving north line. The proposed pool and spa and a number of other items shown here are all within the 100-foot zone. So, I'm not sure that impact on natural environment is, is, it's sort of a flip side of the question. Given the amount of disturbance, it would not be in the least bit difficult to relocate the proposed pool equipment, just as the proposed air conditioning equipment is now going to be relocated. It's a fairly easy solution. I assume that, that, looking for the pointer. Yeah, thank you. You're welcome. Thank you. Got it going? There you go. We'll get it going. I think we're talking about putting the, the condensers in that area. Is that correct, George? Yes. Maybe one there, one on the other side, yeah. Okay, they are currently right there. They already exist there. So, one could stay there and one could stay there. If we want to have the pool equipment here, the six-by-six, I think it is, yeah, six-by-six pad, it could be relocated anywhere along in here. Could also be located on the south side of the pool. It could be also located on the west side of the pool. We've got a 25-foot setback there. So, we've got 77,000 square feet. If you take out this, the 25-foot setback on the north side, we've got 65,000 or 70,000 square feet where these items could be located. I appreciate the fact that, that the applicant has proposed now to move the condensers. But it ought not be a particularly hard endeavor to move the pool equipment similarly. Keep it out of the 25-foot buffer, which was created with a reason, and I hope that you would encourage them to do that. Be happy to answer any questions if you have any for me or the Lavallos.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else, either here or on the teams, that wishes to speak either against this or has a specific question? If so, please indicate now so that Sarah can introduce you into the meeting.
I don't see anyone that wishes to speak in opposition or has a specific question.
Okay. Before we have questions from the board, Mr. Riley, did you have any rebuttal in relation to what Mr. Litchfield had to say?
Just a few things. One is that we felt that we could relocate the air conditioning units because they were substantially more noisy than the pump. Twice as noisy. And that even though it would require a bigger construction expense to alter the house in order to make those work, we were willing to do that. As far as the pool pump goes, I think that it's so silent that no one walking on the road will hear it. And that the proposal of the hedge, which we have part of there, and the enclosure makes the whole thing invisible. Now, it's certainly possible with some effort to relocate it, but it would take up a lot more digging things up because all the underground conduits are already there. But I think that the abutters would be maybe cutting off their nose to spite their face here. Because here's an opposite, a place where we can mitigate the noise of the noisiest thing, which is the generator that, I don't know. I get the feeling that they're saying that they sort of slyly snuck it in. And that it would also visually eliminate that generator and all those utilities. And the pool equipment is really relatively small. And as, as you can see, quiet. So, yeah, I think it's possible. But it would be a, you know, it would dig up more of the, of the resource area, and it would, and I don't see it as accomplishing anything. In fact, it'd make things worse. So, that's my opinion on that.
Okay. Thank you. Questions from the board? Randy?
I have a few questions. So, Mr. Litchfield noted that there could be a heater for the, for the pool. What's your response to that? Is there a heater as well, or is there just the pump?
As far as I know, that no heater was included in this plan. If it is, we'll have to substantially change things. And, and any heater, we put outside the, the 25-foot setback.
So, you'd have to come back if there was going to be?
Yeah. But the pool company did not include that in any plan that I had seen.
Okay. And do you think those letters and all the opposition was more about the noisier?
My feeling is that it was mostly about the noise. That those people used that lane to go to the beach or walk their dog or whatever, and they, and they had a feeling that it would be the sound of the generator or air conditioning units going full blast.
Well, maybe it would be the air conditioning units going full blast, right?
There are no air conditioning units going full blast. Now, we've taken that out.
Okay. Do you think, though, they wrote those letters thinking?
Let me step back for just a second. When we originally proposed the air conditioning units, I was going to do an enclosure with sound baffles and engineered that way. That got quite complicated, which is one of the reasons we withdrew it. The intention was never to have sound as a pollutant to that road.
What, but I mean, those letters, I'm just not clear on the timing. Did your conversation with Mr. Litchfield whereby you decided to take that noisier portion out, do you think the letters were written before anyone knew that?
I think they must have, you can respond to that better than I. I don't know when they wrote the letters. I only got the call from, I, I've been, I'd been away for some time, and I just came back and got a, so I don't know with the timing or the chronology of this at all.
Maybe, Mr. Litch, does that make sense, that question?
Sure.
So, my, my question is, do you think the concern from the neighbors was more, was more related to the noisier apparatus that you've now decided between the two of you to take out of the picture?
The, the, well, I don't presume to speak for the authors of the letters because they only represent the Lavallos. Mr. Roulette is here. But I would surmise that the removal of the condensers would be viewed by them as an improvement.
But not dispositive.
Add to that, if the condensers can be removed, why can't the pool equipment be removed? And why do we need a special permit?
So, you want it all? Okay. I just wanted to clarify. Okay, one more thing. In your findings, that, you know, your findings of fact and what you'd like to rule, us to rule, it's number nine, impact on natural environment. And then you, just unless this is a typo, it says, "There will be increase to impact." What did you mean by that? What kind of increase? Number nine on your paperwork?
Oh, I know, but the, I think that there will be, because it's outside of the conservation buffer zone for the resource, that it would be much less an environmental impact to have not only the, the pool equipment located there, but a reduction of the conduits used to get to it and dig up everything else. It would compact everything.
But you put, "There would be impact." So, did you mean to say there would be minimal impact?
Minimal impact, yeah.
But you didn't write that.
Well, I don't have it in front of me.
I, I actually wrote "minimal" next to it with a question mark.
There's probably a typo on my part.
Okay, that's what I'm asking.
Okay.
Okay, so you don't really think that there's an impact?
No.
Okay. Just want to clarify. Thank you.
George, were you, did you have any involvement in the, the placement and location of the generator when that was done?
No.
Okay. So, you wouldn't know, I'm, I'm, I'm wondering, you know, electrical lines got to go there, gas lines got to go there.
Yeah, it's all there.
They don't have access from Emery Lane, so I'm trying to, where do those utilities come from?
I think they're, they do have access to them.
They do.
I know, I, I don't want to be completely sure. There's, there's some access for utilities coming down the driveway off of Old Harbor.
Yeah, yeah.
I think mainly that's water. I think there is an electrical underground there. I know there's a gas under that, but where that comes, whether it comes off Emery Lane or through the driveway, I am not sure.
Yeah.
My, I could find that out quickly, but, but I don't know. I, I don't remember clearly enough. I know that there's gas for the generator that comes in there, and that was part of the, and also an electric line.
Coming in from Emery Lane side there?
Yeah, I think, I think there at least, is at least an electric line coming in off Emery Lane.
Yeah, okay. Okay, that's, that's all another question I have, Dave. Thanks.
Buck?
Buck has no questions.
Bill?
I mean, Dave, that was a question I had, you know, how is that generator fed?
Yeah.
Which use, so?
It's the, the gas line that comes in there.
My other question is, you, you mentioned moving the, the pool equipment would require some relocation or moving of some of the underground conduit that's in place.
Yeah, because we need to connect the electric line to that, to, to run the pool equipment. And all that electric line is already there now.
It is?
Well, because we have to, electric line for the generator and, and running all those, and the, and the, and the electric line for the house comes in there. So, all that is concentrated in that one space. I mean, they're going to have to run another line, but it's only that little tiny distance. If we move the pool equipment, let's say, let's say behind the wall. I have that thing over here. Have I got this working? We, do we have a, put that picture up, Sarah? Plan? Suppose we moved it into here. You know, I don't know that we can get 25 feet, but let's assume that we can. Now, we have to have another electric line all the way out there, and we have to dig all this up. And not only that, now this pool equipment that we're trying to be silent is really closer to this person's house over here. So, I don't see that they've gained anything. I mean, I can't go down here because that's in the 50-foot. And the only other places we can probably squeeze it over here, but we've already got things over there now. We're putting in the air conditioning units. So, it's, everything is possible. But it's, but it creates just much more complications. For what? For a psychancy, for nothing. Here, you're going to have an enclosure that mitigates the sound of the generator. You're going to have a hedge that blocks it from view, and you have a pool pump that you can't hear. I don't know. Seems to me overkill.
Yeah, the, the only reason I asked the question was because I know that the pool is not even been dug. I mean, it's just a, it was staked, right?
Yeah, right.
So, I didn't know what was, what you were saying was really in the ground that would affect where you may or may not be able to move.
It just makes it even more convenient to, to have all the underground utilities in that one small space rather than having to run all over the place.
that one small space rather than having to run all over the place.
Okay. I didn't have anything else.
Paul?
Well, you've left me a little confused, I guess, as to exactly what is there and what the access is for all of those things. Feel a little bit as if we're guessing. And given that we're trying to get into the setback, or you're trying to get into the setback area, and the purpose of the setback area is to avoid those kinds of issues.
Yes.
I think I'm going to feel more comfortable dealing with this if we have a little bit better information about what can be done based on the comments that have been made. But I don't have any further questions at this point.
Dave, any questions?
As of right now, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Okay.
Would it be better for the board if we don't have the proposal that I proposed to Mr. Litchfield on paper? Would it be better if we continued this and then put that on paper so you could see that? Is that worth doing?
Yes, I think it would be, and also you can find out exactly where the gas line is, electric line.
Yeah, we can mark that on the plan.
And so there's no guesswork, as Paul said. It's hard for us to make a decision.
Right.
When we're just guessing, oh, it might be there, it might be someplace else.
Yeah, right.
So I think that would be a good idea, so you'd need to ask for a continuance.
Yes.
And then you'd have to talk to Sarah and see what date that might work for her.
Okay. Let's do that.
So it depends on how quickly you, how quickly you could get the plan updated. I don't know if you would, we could continue him to our next meeting, which is January 27th, if he was able to provide us with the plan in advance. Otherwise, it would be February 10th.
I think you should do it February 10th.
February 10th.
Yeah, instead of pushing it.
Yes.
So, okay. And it also gives you more of an opportunity to discuss with Mr. Litchfield the concerns of his clients.
Right.
In light of what you have proposed.
All right. That sounds like a plan.
Okay.
Yes.
So if you would formally say, could you have a continuance until February, what's the date?
Right.
February 10th.
Yeah, until February 10th.
So I can ask for a continuance to, what was the date again?
February 10th.
February 10th.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Do any members have any concerns about that?
Agreed? Okay. I'll move to grant the continuance to February 10th of this year.
Second.
Hey, we need a roll call on that. Buck?
Buck says yes. Paul says yes.
Dave Thompson says yes. It's a really great idea. Thank you.
David Church, yes.
Okay, and I say yes, too. So thank you, Mr. Riley.
Thank you.
And we'll see you in a month.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So next order of business is, you all saw the draft that Sarah did winding up the year. This is something that all committees have to do for the select folks, and if you have any comments on it, now's the time to do it. If not, we should vote on it. Obviously, it's very specific, and Sarah keeps a very, very good record, so there's no reason to say, oh, these don't look right. They do look right, so. Any comment?
I don't see any reason to, to think that there's anything inaccurate about this, so I'll move to approve it as submitted by Sarah.
Second.
Okay, and we should all vote on this. Buck?
Buck votes yes.
Bill?
Yes.
All votes yes.
Dave Thompson, yes.
Randy votes yes.
David Church, yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. Thank you, Sarah, for doing that. And it used to be that we had to present it live at the select board's meeting, but I haven't heard anything about that, so I'm going to pretend it didn't happen.
We can bring that up with the next select meeting.
If you'd like to, please do. Okay. So now we go to this matter about sheds. And I'll just give you a little history. Bob Hessler felt that something like this should be put together because he felt we're wasting our time if somebody wants a 100-square-foot shed. So he enlisted Mr. Litchfield's aide, and then they enlisted Katie Donovan's aide, and then they enlisted Sarah's aide. And so this is what happened, and it was supposed to be taken up at the last outdoor town meeting, but unfortunately, it didn't happen. So it's kind of revisiting it and us looking at it and making a recommendation to the planning board. So Paul, can you just give us a quick synopsis of it?
Well, this was. This was Article 60. I did. This was Article 61 in the town meeting warrant last time around, and it was not reached until the second day. And as it turns out, we did not deal with it at that time. Basically, it corrects an issue that I think actually Bill Litchfield had raised with us, and that is previously our ordinance dealt with accessory building and structures over 100 square feet and under 100 square feet, but did not specify what happens if you're 100 square feet. So we had above and below, but not in. So the idea here is to deal with the question of something which is 100 square feet or less. And secondly, to say that that would not be counted towards building coverage on residentially zoned lots, which seemed to be consistent with the overall intent of the bylaw. The other change which is made is a single structure under 25 square feet in area and six feet or less in height would not be counted towards building coverage on residentially zoned lots. Those smaller sheds are subject to a different setback, and that's why they're specified separately. But the board has not previously taken any position with respect to this. It was presented to us at one point, but it was not, there was no request for a vote, but I guess there is now.
I think so.
So I would move to approve the new language, which is now, I guess, Article 20 of the proposed bylaw amendment. And I'll move to approve it.
I second that.
Did anyone have any questions on this before we vote? I guess that was no. So we've had a motion and a second, and again, I think we should all vote on this. Buck?
Buck votes yes.
Bill?
Bill votes yes.
Paul votes yes.
Dave Thompson, yes.
Randy, yes?
David Church, yes.
And I vote yes, and Sarah already has written her letter, so we'll send it along. So there we go. Sarah, did you want me to have anybody sign this page on the continuance?
No, that's, we won't sign for a continuance.
Very good. Is there any other business? Then we need a roll call and a motion to adjourn. Motion, please, Paul?
I'll move to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Okay, everybody gets to vote.
Buck votes yes.
Bill?
Bill votes yes.
Paul votes yes.
Dave?
Dave Thompson votes yes.
Randy, part of you, yes?
David Church, yes.
And I vote yes, and I thank you all very much, and I won't be here next time. I'm on assignment. And your fearless leader will be Paul. Although you got a great one coming up next time. The property on Sarah's point, you have to go see it. You just have to go see what's, what's going on with that whole complex. It's like, it's crazy. It's crazy. Anyway, so that's it. We're out, guys. Thank you.
We are adjourned at 5:14.